I'm gonna call this meeting order. First, we're gonna have the invocation. And I would, this time, I'd ask Ms. Susan Bennett, the pastor of Stockbridge Prefecturean Church, come out and lead us in the invocation. You'd stand?
Let's pray together. Our gracious and loving God, first of all, we must thank you because we live lives really of freedom and privilege compared to so many others in the world. And we often take it for granted and just forget to thank you for the blessings that you pour into our lives, just because we are your children and you love us. And so, we do thank you. Lord, we know that whether you are invited or not, you are always there. But for this meeting on this day, we invite you into this room and into each heart. I pray, Lord, for each member of the board, each person sitting in the audience, that you would put your wisdom, your patience, your kindness, your direction into each heart. We pray, Lord, that your blessing would continue to rest over Henry County and its people. We pray that our feet would stay strong and true on the path that you have laid out for us. We pray, above all things, in discussions, in thinking, in decisions, that your will would be done. I pray that your blessing would rest on each commissioner and that you would lead each one in the way that you have for us. We trust you and we love you and we thank you. We offer this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, we'll have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we accept the agenda, I understand we have two items to add. And I would like to, for the board to consider. Twelve, B, to add, to accept early termination of a lease agreement of airport property. And also, twelve, C, a budget amendment. Do we have a motion to approve the budget? I mean, not the budget, excuse me. Motion to accept the agenda.
Move to accept the amended agenda.
Okay, so, we have a motion, second. In discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We'll move forward. Takes us down to item five, the public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, so on, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of this meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. We will recognize Chris McDaniel.
I'd like to say good afternoon to all board members. And as I begin my comments, as a former DeKalb County police officer for eight years, I want to thank the Henry County Police Department, men and women, for what they do to protect and serve our streets. I come at this time to ask the board of commissioners, or to inquire with the board of commissioners, as a resident of District Two who lives off of Losy Lane, who has Highway 155 right at my doorstep, as to the reason why item number ninety-one for the 2016-2020 Henry County Short-Term Work Program for the improvement or the expansion of SR 155 from Beale Gardner to Lester Mill Road of four lanes, and from Lester Mill Road to I-75 southbound of six lanes, has been postponed. As a father of four, I, and as a resident of Henry County for up to four years now, I have seen the increase in traffic, truck traffic, the increase in infrastructure of Home Depot warehouses. There's an office park being built right across the street from where I live at. And I've been a witness to many of horrific accidents, T-bones, at that very intersection of where I live. As a former person in the military, one thing I learned as an engineer, as a combat engineer, is you must have appropriate infrastructure to accommodate what we're trying to do. I'm not an opponent, opponent, or towards increasing or bringing jobs to Henry County, but I can tell you that the traffic congestion on 155 is unbearable. And that at times, it takes me thirty minutes to get from my house to I-75. And I asked the commissioners if they can to work with, to continuously work with the Department of Transportation to improve the infrastructure on Highway 155 and make it a safer area. And that's all that I have. And thank you.
Mr. Bonner, do we know what's going on with that project? Why it got put on hold? It's been put on hold?
I'm gonna get Wade Stroud up, Commissioner. Any number of things. I don't know if it's actually been put on hold or where, was that an initial process? I'll get Mr. Stroud to address that for you.
Okay, I just wanna answer this gentleman's questions.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Prince. Sploes has money for design for the project. GDOT is gonna be the one funding the actual construction. In our last update with GDOT, they've got that in their long-range construction plan. So, Sploes has the design, but as far as the actual construction of the project goes, it's my understanding from their long-range model that we're looking at 2020 to 2022 before we can even consider the money being available for construction.
Okay, are you working on the design now?
I'm not sure. Rocky would have to be the one to answer that. I'm not aware that we are. But I do that money has been allocated in the current Sploes for the design work, but I can't answer whether or not the design has actually started on it.
Okay, all right. Let us get your name and number, if you don't mind. And we'll get back with you. And as a engineer in the military, I happen to agree with you. So, we'll, we'll figure out what's going on with it, 'cause I hadn't heard it's been put on hold.
Yes, sir. I'm just reading from what I printed off, which is actually one of the executive summaries from one of the previous meetings. It is item number ninety-one. It says, "Sploes Concept Design Complete Postponed Cost Estimate $11.5 million."
Okay, all right. Get your number to, she's got it, okay.
Thank you.
They'll circle back around with you. Thank you.
Now, we'll hear Larry Maury.
My name is Larry Maury from 418 Dorchester, Locust Grove. In commenting on what this gentleman just said, I did call your office, Wade, three weeks ago, and I still haven't got a phone call. But that's okay. And I think two months ago, I brought that to y'all's attention about the traffic out there. And the only thing I can tell that's got any better out there is that there's just a lot more trash on the side of the highway. And, but that's the only thing I've seen, you know. I, I got something I want to, I represent ethics in government. And I think what we have in Henry County is a failure to understand. You know, voters have complaints and get very frustrated, and due to no one listening or getting back to you, and being ridiculed in a lot of cases. And that causes them to get even more frustrated. An example of that is the golf course in 155. You know, we complain, but it does no good to complain, 'cause you just go off in a different direction. We don't do any improvements out there on 155. And we've run the people out of the golf course and leased more equipment for five more years. So, it just, you know, I'm sure you don't understand why we get frustrated, but that's the why we get frustrated. You commissioners hire another policeman, put policemen at the doors. After a while, what you gonna do? Hire one to go home with you? Why can't we just be civil and respectful and listen to what each other has, as a problem? I mean, after all, we do pay the taxes for y'all to spend. And you would think there'd be a little bit more respect and appreciation for that. You know, I've, I've listened in the last couple of months about calling people terrorists and, and what that gentleman who come before this board, if you look at the law, it's very plain. Two of your, one former commissioner and one of you sitting commissioners have paid your fines since then. So, it must be true, but we don't listen. And that's what causes the problem we have in Henry County. There must be some reason why no commissioner, chairman, has repeated theirself. And, Mr. Moss, I told you, you were gonna lose in the runoff. And you know, there's gonna be some more if you get beat, if you don't start listening to the people. Just keep going, you know, it'll come, what goes around, my daddy said, "We'll go around, what goes around will come around." We cut the meeting short. We want, we don't want people coming up here and talking and having a long period of discussion because y'all don't wanna listen to it. You're gonna listen to it sooner or later, or you're gonna be voted out of office. That's the common way of doing things if you can't get together. I think it'd be much better for Henry County if we worked together, addressed our problems, and then tried to do something about it. Now, I'm gonna give an example. I try to stand pretty close to this microphone, 'cause I, I want everybody out here to hear what's said. That thing at Berish, for, for two years, you couldn't see what was on it. And you finally fix that. I wanna tell you, appreciate, I'm glad you fixed entrance to the courthouse, I think, after about several months of being, but some of you commissioners have a habit of laying back in your chair about four foot from the mic, and you mumble, "What, these people can't hear what you're saying?" You're mumbling to yourself. Why can't you set up when somebody asks you something, and out of respect to them, talk into the microphone, so they can hear what you're saying? We shouldn't be hiding things like that. What we have from a failure to understand is we have a failure to respect people. And after all, these people out here work hard, and they pay their taxes, and they expect you to listen when they say something or suggest something. Instead of hiring policemen and cutting the meeting short, you should respect them enough to listen to what they say. I don't need no policeman to go home with me. I've been a commissioner, I never had one go home with me or standing in the courtroom. The Ninety-first Psalm says, "He'll take care of, if you do what's right."
You mentioned not getting back to-
Speak in his life, I can't hear you.
If you'd be quiet, you could. If you, you mentioned that we don't have constituents that we don't get back to and we don't speak with. Would you please, I'm all ears and my pen ready, which constituents in the fourth district have I not gotten back to? I can't hear you, I'm sorry, you're not in the microphone.
I never have called you, sir. The only time I've seen you is here. You've never called me about anything I've brought forward to commission.
Well, you hadn't brought anything that I needed to discuss with.
I've talked about 155 for the fourth time, and you've never called me.
GDOT?
Sir?
Department of Transportation.
I, I told you about 155 right here.
Georgia, Georgia Department of Transportation, we can get you the number.
I called his office four weeks ago, and I'm yet to have a call back. And I'll let you check my phone log anytime you want to.
Again, you said the commissioners, I was just wondering if you had an incident where the fourth district hadn't gotten back to a citizen or hadn't treated a citizen with respect?
The only thing I've ever asked Mr. Bonner was twice. Mr. Bonner did both of the times what I asked him to do. He took care of it. I didn't get that from GDOT, and I sure hadn't got that from the commissioners. And I appreciate that. He and I, that I know of, don't have a problem.
I don't, I don't understand. You, you haven't called me, and you don't know any examples of that, but-
Okay, next person we'll recognize will be David Gill. I know David was planning on being here this morning, and he's in Atlanta right now, and he's gonna try to make it back. So, at some point in time, hopefully, he'll be here at some part of the meeting. We'll, unless any commissioner has any problem, we'll recognize him at some point in time and let him have his five minutes. Now, we'll go down to the consent agenda, number six. You commissioners, you've got the list there. If, does anybody have an op, anybody wanna delete or add to this?
Mr. Vaughn, you might wanna just read each one of the items under the consent agenda, so it's clear when a motion is made, what it's, what that motion would be to approve.
Okay. A is resolution to approve the 2017 holiday schedule. The next one is a resolution authorizing the use of $2,970.66 in federal asset forfeiture and seized fund monies for the outfitting of the Henry County Police SWAT vehicle. The next one is a resolution approving the addition of speed humps on Moore Drive located in District Three. The next one is a resolution requesting an increase in the Henry County Tax Commissioner's budget to allocate funds for two motor vehicle kiosks in the amount of $57,600. The next one is a resolution to approve acceptance of the settlement from Kimberley Horn Associates for Fairview Road Widening Phase Two Project in the amount of $54,841. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
We have a motion, we get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Move to the next item. The next items will be item seven, DOT, and the presenter will be Wade Stroud.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. This first agenda item is for the award of bid number sixteen dash sixty-three for plant asphalt mix to ER Schnell, with a secondary award to CW Matthews in the event of availability issues and scheduled downtime for ER Schnell. This is a request to establish an annual contract for plant mix asphalt for all county roadwork and related projects. This request was bid through the Purchasing Department and posted on websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Bid invitations were sent out via the Team Georgia Marketplace, and three vendors responded. This is an annual contract with two mutually agreed upon renewals, nine to see three years that can be authorized by the Purchasing Director as required. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Does anybody have any questions? Do we have a motion?
To approve.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, that'll take us to our next item. Wade?
Okay, thank you, sir. This next agenda item is a request of an award of bid for dump truck rentals. The rental of tandem dump trucks is required by DOT to haul asphalt and other paving materials when needed. Having a contract for the rental of dump trucks allows quick access without the necessity of bidding each time dump trucks are needed, and guarantees prices will remain firm for one-year contract period. This request was processed through the Purchasing Department. Bid documents were posted on the county website. The bid notice was also listed on ACCG GLGA website. Two vendors submitted a bid for this request. Faultless Business Center, Inc., located in McDonough, was the overall most responsive and lowest bid. A bid tabulation sheet is attached for the price comparison. Funding for these services is available in the department budget. Be happy to answer any questions on this item as well.
Son, anyone have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Next thing, it'll be, let me see here, item eight, Technology Services, presenter Skip Floyd. Thank you, Skip.
Good afternoon, sir, gentlemen. This item is for the maintenance renewal for our local area network. It comes up every year, and this is a budgeted item in our, in our budget. It is also on a state contract, which is on, on the resolution. I won't read out that long number. Basically, it's for $125,822.27, and the company was formerly known as AdCap, has now changed their name to SPS. Are there any questions on this? I'd be glad to answer.
So, you wanna have any questions? Do I have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Skip. The next item will be a public hearing, and Edward Morrow will be presenting a short-term work program in capital improvement element, annual update transmitted. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The item that's before you for consideration is an annual update to the short-term work program and capital improvement element. This document represents the actions that are taken by the county's various departments over the given five-year period to bring fruition to the vision set forth in our comprehensive plan. It's also a requirement for the county to maintain its qualified local government status, which, as you know, is important for state funding. Before transmitted to the ARC, the draft report requires a public hearing and adoption of a resolution by the Board of Commissioners. And of course, after review by the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs, the revised report will come back before the BOC for a final adoption. We do have, sorry, the report is compiled by the Planning and Zoning Department with direct input from many of our other departments, and several of them are here today to answer any specific questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Morrow? If not, we will open up the public hearing, and we'll ask anybody that's in opposition to come speak in opposition of this plan. Again, do we have anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have anybody in the audience who wants to speak in, in favor of this proposal? I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wanna speak in favor? Okay, that'll clear up the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing and leave it to the board. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you.
That'll take us down to item ten. It's a resolution approving right-of-way agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and Snapping Shoals, and Ron Burkhard will be the presenter.
Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. The voters of Henry County approved a Sploes Four referendum, which included funds for a new park in District Five. It's necessary to enter into a right-of-way easement agreement with Snapping Shoals EMC to provide and maintain electric service to the new District Five park located at 750 Fairview Road in Ellenwood. There's no cost to Henry County involved in this agreement. Upon execution of this agreement, Snapping Shoals EMC will have the document recorded at the county courthouse. Staff recommends approval. I'll answer any questions, if you have any.
On the progress and also the timeline for completion?
Commissioner, we're still on track for a late October, early November completion right now. The curbing, all the curbing, all the grading is done, all the underground utilities are installed, the curb and gutter's been installed. Some of the GAB for the paving has gone down. Paving will start, the first lift of paving will start within the next two weeks. The ball fields have been graded. Lighting is on-site for the, the ball fields themselves, and all of the buildings, all the pavilions and the community building are currently under construction.
Thanks, Ron. Again, great work.
Does anyone have any more questions? Do you have a motion to approve?
Some move.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ron, this'll take us to item B.
Yes, sir. Thank you again. The voters of Henry County approved a Sploes Four referendum, which included funds for ambulances and fire stations' capital equipment. There's a need to purchase equipment for the three new pumper trucks totaling over $300,000. The current available balance in the fire station's capital equipment account is $256,496. After completing the one ambulance remount and purchasing one new ambulance with all the necessary equipment, there is $53,471 available in the ambulance account. A budget amendment is needed transferring the $53,471 from the Sploes Four county-wide ambulance account to the Sploes Four county-wide fire station's capital equipment account to cover the cost of equipment needed for the three new pumper fire trucks. Staff recommends approving the transfer. If you have any questions?
Ron, you know me and the fire trucks. Real quick, just a question. So, there, there's three new fire trucks, and they're saying that you're totaling over $300,000? 'Cause I, do we know what kind? And I ask this because a, a pumper truck finished out's gonna be about five, twenty-five apiece. So, I just don't know, are we talking about, this is $300,000 total that we're trying to buy three fire trucks for?
No, sir. In a previous resolution to the board, we've already awarded the, the fire- In a previous resolution to the board, we've already awarded the, the fire truck. In the capital account for the fire stations was two-point-one million dollars.
Yep.
The fire trucks came out of that.
Yep.
This is just in, this is outfitting the fire trucks. We had a separate account.
Okay, this is, this is-
This was a separate account with one remount and one ambulance-
Got it.
Commissioner, and this-
Okay. All right, this, the outfit.
And, and we were able to get a, by buying four ambulances, we were able to have some savings in this account. We just want to transfer it to the fire stations.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Ron.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, Bud Kelly Park. When are we looking at tentatively opening that and now we're, we're finished basically?
Uh, Commissioner, at the next board meeting, I'll be bringing the, to the board for the awarding of the contract. We've already received the bids back. I owe you some information, okay? But once it's, uh, once the board, at the next board meeting awards it, it's approximately thirty days before we'll issue a notice to proceed and from that point, the contractor will have three hundred calendar days to complete it.
Okay. Now, what about the park? When are we looking at having a ribbon cutting on the park?
The park, right now, the contractor's working on the punch list. We went out, uh, a week ago and went and, and developed a punch list and he's working on that. Hopefully, the punch list within the next week to two weeks will be complete and at that time, I'll get with you or Melissa will get with you and we'll try to schedule a, a ribbon cutting.
Great, fantastic.
It's close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
This will take us down to item eleven, under Transit. And we'll have a resolution accepting Georgia Transportation, five-three-one-one Rural Transportation Operation Assistance Grant with Thailand Salta's presenting.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Approval is requested for FY seventeen, Georgia Department of Transportation, fifty-three-eleven Operating Assistance Grant for Henry County Transit pursuant to FTA Section fifty-three-eleven Rural Transportation Program. GDOT offers operating and capital assistance to rural transportation programs. Henry County has been a participant for the last twenty-seven years in this program. Henry County will be eligible for reimbursement up to one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, sixty-seven dollars in operating assistance for FY seventeen. Local support in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, sixty-seven dollars is regular budgeted funds for the county's share of normal operations and represents the local match for GDOT funds.
Anybody have any questions? Not? Do we have a motion? We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That'll take us down to item B.
Approval is requested for the FY seventeen, Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT fifty-three-eleven Capital Assistance Grant for Henry County Transit pursuant to FTA Section fifty-three-eleven Rural Transportation Program. GDOT offers operating and capital assistance to rural transit programs. Henry County has been a participant for the last twenty-seven years. Henry County will receive one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and five cents in capital assistance for replacement of four existing buses that have met their useful life. Henry County will be required to provide a ten percent local match of nineteen thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. And the state of Georgia will provide a ten percent match of nineteen thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for a grand total of one-hundred-ninety-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents in capital funds.
So you want to have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Take us down to item C.
Henry County Transit provides demand response transportation to clients within Henry County. Henry County Transit has an annual contract with Georgia Department of Human Services for FY seventeen. The contract is in the amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, a fee for service. As of July one, two thousand and sixteen, DHS has implemented an entirely new computer program to manage all requests from DHS. Secondly, demand and ridership has increased, which caused an increase of telephone reservations. Currently, Henry County Transit Department has only one full-time scheduler. As a result of the above-mentioned events, the Transit Department has identified the need to hire an additional scheduler, scheduler, excuse me, to manage the new trips software implemented by DHS and to help insist with increased demand for transportation. The salary and benefits for this new position is in the amount of fifty thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Thank you. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll take us down to item twelve, under County Attorney, number A. A Resolution Approving Professional Services Agreement with On Point Strategies LLC for Lobbying Service, presenter Patrick Jogstad.
Thank you, Mr. Barham. Before you, as a proposal, a proposed resolution to contract with On Point, uh, On Point Strategies LLC, they are a, essentially a governmental affairs firm that they lobby state and federal governments and agencies and it's been recommended that the county could make use of these services to ensure that the county's getting everything we can possibly get from the state, the federal government, and other organizations and departments and agencies associated with them. The principal at On Point Strategies LLC is William Woodall, he goes by Woody Woodall. He's an experienced governmental relations lobbyist, essentially, it's, it's ugly to say lobbyist, but that's essentially what they are. This proposal would be a twelve-month agreement at two thousand dollars a month. And we need to, if the board sees fit, we would approve the agreement. And we would also need to designate a person to be his contact. We don't want Mr. Woodall, if he is working for us, to go to six, seven, eight, nine different people and get a different set of instructions. We want to funnel all of the, all of his instructions through one person. My recommendation would be to appoint the county manager or his designee. If the manager can't do it, he can hand that off to someone else. And that's, that's, um, included within the resolution as well at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the resolution where it says it is further resolved, we'll need to insert, and it would make sense to just put the county manager or his designee.
Have any questions?
Yes. Explain to the public exactly what's going on here. We've had a lot of complaints about transportation and, um, some of the things that we need help with is up at the Capitol. We need to get more funding down here to Henry County. And it's become a major issue, traffic and transportation, you know, is pretty bad here in Henry County. So what we're doing is we're actually hiring a lobbyist who will go to the Capitol and will fight for Henry County to get us, make sure that we get the monies that are going out to the other counties in this area. It's very important to, you know, be represented at the Capitol and we have a great delegation. We have one of the strongest delegations in the state up there. But we need a little more help with some of our transportation projects and getting the funding that we, we deserve to get. So we really, we've talked about this with the board for quite some time. We've molded over and, um, one of the biggest requests from the citizens is about, uh, transportation and we try to respond to our citizens by doing things. And, uh, so, uh, we've decided that this would probably be the best way to go. And so, um, I, I'm going to recommend this. I know it's a little bit of money, but we, we hope to reap much, much more benefits in relieving some of the traffic and transportation issues here in Henry County. So that's kind of what's going on and what, what we're doing with this. With that, I yield the floor.
Anybody else? Uh, I'd like to also make a, a comment. David Gill was planning on being here to speak in behalf of this and I don't think he ever made it back, but he sent an email out to the board today. And if y'all will, I'm going to read this so it'll be in the record. Good morning, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the Board of Commissions. My name is David Gill and I am President and CEO of Henry County Chamber of Commerce located at seventeen oh nine Highway twenty west, McDonough, Georgia. I am pleased to be here this morning to make a few comments about this transportation funding. As with many of you, I often hear Henry County referred to as a place where traffic comes to a stop. While not really, the full truth in fact is that traffic congestion is a significant issue in our county and with the inevitable growth to come out to our community, it will not be improved without a positive action on our part. The Joint Cities and County Transportation Plan that you recently adopted shows an estimated cost to implement over twenty-five years' planning period of three-point-three-one-billion dollars with only one-point-three billion in endowable funds. Even by locating these hundred percent of the next splotch to transportation and adopting a T-splotch, there is a projected shortfall of eight-hundred-and-ninety-million dollars. And this is an unrealistic projection in most political scenarios. Tax increases solely for transportation projects have not proven to be popular. Clearly, we need to look at alternatives to find funding to close this gap. The passage of House Bill one-seventy has created a significant pool of funds for transportation improvement statewide. Unlike previous years, the limited factor for transportation projects is not available for funding, rather a need for ready-to-go projects to be sent to ARC and GDOT for approval and funding. We have greatly needed projects identified and really implemented. Last year, the chamber led a delegation of community representatives to meet with Jay Roberts, the Director of Planning for the Department of Transportation, including a meeting where representatives from the Chamber, the Henry County Development Authority, the Quality Growth, our legislative delegation, Department of Transportation, and county officials. The result of that meeting was great awareness of GDOT, of our needs and traffic priorities. And as a result to the, the county will receive in excess of seventeen million in funding for the Western Parallel Connector that shows how effective solicitation of funding can be. I know from your agenda that you are considering bringing a professional on board to represent Henry County for transportation issues. We cannot rely solely on splotch and local taxpayer funding to resolve our transportation's needs. We must have additional financial support in order to implement the county transportation plan as adopted by this body. While our delegation and GDOT board members do a good job of solicitation of funding, counties that enjoy greatness and success are those who supplement their efforts with professional representation. When you look at counties such as Cobb, Fulton, Gwinnett, with annually received millions in transportation dollars, one common thread is there is representation. I want to strongly encourage that you act favorably on this agenda item. We need a consistent and constant voice at the state level, working to bring transportation funding to this community. I look forward to working with whomever you select and believe that it will be a very positive step to improve both quality of life and business climate of Henry County. Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Barham, I'll transmit a copy of that email because I received it as well to the clerk and she can make it part of the minutes.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second? All, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, that takes us down to item B. That was yours too, Patrick.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barham, as you and the rest of the board members are aware, Wells Fargo Bank has for some time been leasing some hangars at the airport, specifically hangars located on lots twenty-two through twenty-five and lot twenty-six. They, they are annual year-to-year leases that expire, uh, at the end of October is when the ex, natural expiration dates of the leases are. We've received correspondence from Wells Fargo indicating that they wish to terminate the lease, not to renew the lease for another year, and they also wish to pay us the balance due under the lease immediately and surrender possession of the properties immediately to us rather than waiting until the end of October. In order to do that, we will have to enter into an agreement, be a comprehensive lease termination agreement, which we don't have today. We just got these letters. But we do need the board to accept, if it so wishes, the early termination of these leases and make it subject upon or subject to us negotiating an agreement and authorize the chairman to sign it once it's done. And if you make a resolution to that effect, we can go ahead and wrap this up and get these, get these hangar spaces back into the hands of Mr. Bonner, see if we can get productive use out of them. They've been vacant for years, uh, two, a good, at least a good two years.
We have WASP there. Patrick, do you know how many square feet in these buildings?
I do not. Mr. Bonner does.
Commissioners, um, when this first came out, we started backing up and trying to get some additional information. We've had of it. There are three buildings and they are a hundred and, uh, let's see, a hundred and forty feet by a hundred and twenty feet. So let me do a quick calculation on that for you and you'll know what all three of Sixteen thousand, eight hundred feet for each one. Now, there's some configurations in one of the buildings, Building twenty-six, and the permitting aspects that are here don't match what we've got, uh, the, the physical property doesn't match what we have on file. But essentially, you've got a, a number of spaces. Two of them, according to the inspections that were completed this morning by Henry County Building Department, two of them are ready to be leased right now. Uh, I've got, Mr. Purvis has gone through them, but we want to make sure the doors work. We're going to make certain that everything is in line so they could have occupancy. One of them has some structures in it that I think we're going to remove. So by my lease standpoint, I think I've got one that could be rented as soon as we close this up. Two of them were just in a couple of weeks after that. And the third one, we may have to lease as is because it's got a number of permitting issues and some constructive repair issues. Um, but when we first got this, I got this out to board as soon as possible. Uh, we've still got some other analysis due of it, but it certainly looks as if the work we started back in, really February, has come to fruition. And just so the board knows, right now, the forty percent evaluation of these are about five-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but that would be the forty percent evaluation. Add that, we've got about two million dollars worth of assets that I think are worth more than that for their earning potentials. In the arrangement, I want to make the board clear, we are foregoing the lease arrangement after December, so they're going to pay us the lease arrangements before. We don't know if they're going to pay the tax consequences of the twenty-two thousand, but if we rent one building and lot, it'll pay for itself in the, in the first two months. Most money we'd wake of it in either case. So I thought it was a great, uh, a, a, a good resolve from cradle to grave. And we've had a couple of nonprofits that expressed an interest in it. We've had a number of other issues on it. We need to go ahead and firm up how we want to handle the lease arrangement on it, whether, uh, and we know we've got a number of our vehicles to take care of that. First thing is get it in hand, let's get it so we understand what we're actually leasing out, and then we'll deal with the vehicle of it. But I think it's a win-win. I'd rather be patient and perseverance, and I won't go through the other part of it, but this is a good win for the county, I think.
I agree with you a hundred percent. This is a great asset for us and I've been over there and looked at the building several times. Is any other commissioner have any questions or comments?
We actually have some lease proposals or interesting people starting to stack up who want to take a look at it. So sooner we get this wound up and get this back before the board, um, then the sooner we can actually get some contractual financial benefit at the airport. These will also be the first ones that are tied into the sewer. So you will have a commercial wastewater treatment or that'll be tied back to it. So it'll have everything in place at a, a full-based aviation use would, would support or any other things. We already got fire sup- We already got fire suppression there, so it's absolutely three astounding facilities that you now have the ability to take over.
With that said, no other questions? Do we have a motion to accept the early termination of the leases of airport property?
And Mr. Barm, and to authorize the chairman to execute documents associated with it?
Yes. So move, chairman. So move. You got a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay, that'll take us down to... The next item will be Mr. Leonard Bonner for the budget amendment.
Good afternoon, board. Before you this evening, this afternoon, is a budget amendment that would look to accommodate about four point one million dollars worth of capital improvements. They're listed in there. There are essentially some emergency management and fire and EMS apparatus. We have run up short with some of the ambulances, and I think you'll see two pumppers on there. Sometime back, Chief Johnson traveled down to Bradenton, Florida, and saw these units. And I want to make sure you understand, as I did with Commissioner Prince earlier, the two fire trucks that you're looking at, they'll be about three hundred and seventy, three hundred and eighty thousand apiece, and the rest of that money up to the five-ten is to get them fully fitted to be in service. So when you say turnkey, it's not like we're going to drive them in and be able to plaque them in the station or not. We're going to have quite a bit of work to them. But these are promotional, and we've got some discounts on it that. I know it comes at a bad time for when we just adopted the mileage rate less than a week ago. The other parts of that has to do with the highest priorities that were put into capital improvement, and these pumppers were in there also, but it's for the roof at the public safety. We know that roof leaks, we know we've got some air conditioning problems, and that's a huge building. If the complex is to be looked at for what it's highest and best used in the future is, it's probably to return back to retail when we have a public safety complex that we could move fire, police service, and EMA in a building that's suitable for the work they're intended to provide to Henry County. But that's down the road, so all of the maneuvers and all the strategies that are in here are trying to find a way to buy three to five years so that we have an opportunity to build a capital plan for a public safety complex in other locations. Board has any questions on the amendment? Please let me know. This came short order because frankly, the, all of these that were presented go back to March. This is when the capital plan was presented to the board. I think it was Thursday night, Chief Willis sent me an email indicating we had another ambulance that was going out, and it just kind of exacerbated the problems of, if you look at the fleet that we have over at Fleet Services, you see a line of ambulances and fire trucks out there, and they've been out there for a while. Some of them are just not cost effectively to try to repair, and you've got a history on what the aging of the mileage is on it. It's the same thing with the air conditioners and the roof at public safety. Public safety houses both fire and rescue, but it also handles our nine-one-one backup system. It leaks. It's got compromised air, and it was probably less than roof than it has been when we got it. So it's the first time we are investing in it. The reason I'm proposing we invest in that is go ahead and put a quality roof up there and AC. It'll make the building more sellable in the future if we want to use this facility to try to offset the cost for the public safety complex. Board have any questions for me? I'm here. Yes, sir.
How about the ambulance down at Station Twelve? I understood it was taken out, out of service or taken or whatever. You know anything about it?
No, but I got some smart people who would, as, as at, what station?
Twelve.
You took an ambulance out of Station Twelve?
Yes, sir. The ambulance broke down.
The ambulance broke down.
It's back, sir.
And for the first time, to the public, this is Chief Nehemiah Willis. This is her first appearance at a meeting. This is Fire Chief for Henry County. Welcome in.
Do you know when it's going to be back in service?
Okay. Back in service.
Oh, he is back in, okay, thank you.
But we've still got a couple out. We had one burned down. We've had a lot of high mileage units that are out there, so we're, this was what was recommended back by Chief Johnson back when. I'm just trying to move them into the capital program now, along with the roof and along with the other, the components that address the public safety area, including the storage area and CID and the issues down at our other remote storage area.
So is that in this?
Yes, that nine hundred, it is nine hundred thousand, which was listed in the capital budget for PD. That was for the construction of going vertical or horizontal or some other ways, construction within the public safety complex. That was the, and that was back from March also, that's in your five-year capital plan.
Mr. Bonner, let me tell you where I'm at here. I don't like walk-ons, you know, I don't like walk-ons, and there's been a couple of questions bouncing back and forth with the, between the boards. I tell you where I'm at. You know me and my fire trucks and ambulances. I'll vote all day to buy new fire trucks and ambulances. I'll be honest with you, though, the roof and the other renovations, I'd like a little more time to take a look at it. Perhaps we can put this back on the agenda in two weeks. But again, I would gladly vote for the ambulance and fire truck right now, but I really would like a little more time to research, to make sure that this is the direction that the board wants to go with that building out there at the shopping center. So that, that's where I'm at. I don't know the feelings of my other commissioners.
That being, you can modify, amend any way. This is, there were no capital dollars in the budget, so when I got it as an urgency now, I'm just trying to get the first parts moved in that it gets us there.
Yeah, I understand that.
You just tell me which ones you want, let me get some direction, and we'll take care of the business.
And again, I'm not saying it's a problem. I just like a little more time. I don't like walk-ons.
We'll schedule the rest of it to come back at the next meeting when we've got the full conscience of the Board of County Commissioners here.
Okay. But I am prepared to vote for the fire trucks and ambulances.
Okay.
Bruce, you seem to be in agreement?
I'm on board with that.
So the fire trucks and the ambulances now?
What does that total?
One million two hundred and ninety-five.
So we're talking about one point two nine five?
One point two plus some ambulance.
One point two nine five.
One point two nine five.
Simple math.
Is that right?
That's where I'm coming up with.
Two hundred, so you've got the five, one point two and two hundred and seventy-five for the ambulance.
On top.
There's another we're trying to press back in that's at the contractor, so let me...
I think the total's one million two hundred and ninety-five, is it?
That's what I got, one fire truck and one ambulance.
Two fire trucks and ambulances, that's what I got.
That's what I got.
What was your math, sir?
One million two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'm willing to bet that Mrs. Sorrow has already got that calculated, so we'll do it. If that's the board's direction, just give me a motion, direction, and I'll take care of the rest of it.
I'll make a motion to do a budget amendment to move the money and purchase one ambulance, two fire trucks. I don't know how much that is at one point.
And Commissioners, if you could add something there now?
We're looking at two options. We could...
Commissioner Prince, I've been looking with maintenance department. We got two options. We're looking for demo ambulance for immediate. We think it'd be more advantageous for the money if we remount two of the broke trucks we have now that are not serviceable. It'd be a little bit longer to get them, but we get two trucks for the same price we get one.
Have they been remounted before?
No.
So this is the first time remounted?
This is first time remounted. They're in great condition to be remounted. One's got a blown motor, one's been in an accident, both of them over two hundred and ten thousand miles, and we think we can get both of them in a timely manner better, which is a better option than getting one demo truck that is made to kind of fit our organization or fit our structure with fire equipment and everything. We have two that exactly fit our organization for just about a month longer in delivery time.
I'm going to look to you for that. You know, I don't like remounts too, too much because again, you know, by the time we get rid of them, they're toast.
Exactly. We've got one remount in our, in our plan.
Right.
For do that. We feel safe with that. We just don't want to be tied into that money for one ambulance when we might get a better deal with two ambulances for the same price at two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I guess I have to be honest, I'm a little bit uncomfortable voting for this today simply because it was just, you know, this is my first time seeing it, and it doesn't seem like we have a clear understanding of what we're voting on, given the price tag. So are you okay with us waiting for the next meeting to vote for this, or?
If we could, Commissioner, if we could do the fire trucks, we have a contracted price. The price has been approved through purchasing. It's on a GPO for the two engines because they're available. Somebody comes to them with a check, they're getting them. If we could do that today, we got to bid, the ambulance has got to be bid out anyway. The ambulance is not ready to be purchased. We can get with purchasing, we have specs ready to go out for bid. We can get them on the streets. By the next meeting, we'll have a exact process, do our bid process through Mr. Gray and his department, so everything's up front and you have exact numbers. But if we could move on the fire trucks today, that would be very beneficial for us.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, you're looking at the five-ten and the five-ten for a million two, and that would be authorized for immediate acquisition?
I'd like to revise my motion to, make a motion to approve two fire trucks, which is one million twenty.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion?
For immediate acquisition.
Immediate acquisition.
We got a second.
Hold on, hold on a second.
My alter conscience.
Yes, please.
It would probably be better if we brought the purchase before the board with all the vendor information, the contract number. I didn't, I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda today, or I could have had it prepared. I would recommend approving the funding, allowing us to bring the purchase back. Chief Johnson is accurate. We've been working with the fire department. It's a cooperative agreement purchase, but I think to cover your legal basis, you need to bring the purchase with all the details before the board instead of just approving an immediate acquisition. I wouldn't be comfortable doing that.
Okay. For the third time, you mean just do an amendment to?
Just the budget amendment.
Just a budget amendment to move that over? We can do that?
Do we have a, all original motions and seconds? Can we go forward with the new?
You can make a new motion. It would be a substitute motion. New motion, do second vote.
Okay.
Make a new substitute motion, that we do a budget amendment to move one million twenty thousand to general fund at this time.
We'll bring the rest of it back in a second.
All right, that's, we got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? A's had. Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Okay, that'll take us down to item thirteen, approval of the minutes for July nineteenth, twenty sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion's second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next, we'll go down to Chairman and Commissioners' comments. Mr. Chairman's not here today. He's up in Alaska. He's in a lot cooler weather than we are, but he asked me to do this, and it was, I appreciate the opportunity to chair this meeting. I'll start down here with Bruce, Mr. Miles, Mr. Prince.
I just want to thank you for chairing the meeting, Gary. I think you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager, do you have any comments?
I'm not at this time.
Okay. What about the county attorney?
Nothing further from me.
Okay, upcoming meetings. We have a meeting August sixteenth at six-thirty PM is a regular meeting. September the sixth at nine AM is a regular meeting. I understand we have to go into executive session. Can you tell me what we...
We, we need a executive session to discuss pending litigation, potential litigation, and real estate acquisitions.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with a provision of OCGA in five, fifty dash fourteen dash three and other applicable laws and present to the advice of the county attorney for the purposes of pending in or potential litigation. We got a motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much for being here. I don't know how long we're going to be in executive session.